Hello, in a regular town council meeting, March 23rd, 2023. Welcome, everyone. Clerk, please call the or.
Councilmember Leva. Councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Heppertly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Pogudin.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I'd like to welcome down Pastor Kendra Hobson with St. Luke for our invocation. Thank you, ma'am.
Testing. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. We first acknowledge your holiness, Father, your greatness and your magnificence. Father, we thank you and we allow you into this meeting. We say that you are welcome. Lord, I ask that you just bless each and every person, each household that's represented. Father, may everything that is done and said here be acceptable into your sight, Father. We thank you and now to him who was able to keep you from stumbling and to present you faultless before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy to God our Savior, who alone is wise, be glory and majesty, dominion and power, both now and forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, Service Award, Staff Service Award, Michelle Jordan, librarian, 10 years.
Mayor, council, we're here to celebrate Michelle Yorting, 10 years of service with the town of Prescott Valley. We'll start off, Jocelyn Joseph is her direct manager. Jocelyn is our library manager. Jocelyn?
Hello, council. Throughout the eight-plus years I have known Michelle, I have been impressed with her resilience, knowledge, and altruism. Michelle is very knowledgeable in all areas of librarianship, which comes from experience and education. In the past 10 years, she has earned her master's degree in library science and completed countless hours of continuing education. The training she has received resulted in valuable contributions to our community through the services and programs she has brought to the library. Michelle has hosted programs, classes, and events that bring cultural awareness, computer education, artistic appreciation, love of nature, and so much more. She is always discovering new programs and resources to help educate and entertain our community, and she writes grants to help fund these valuable services. As if that wasn't enough, Michelle is also currently the co-chair of the Arizona Library Association's annual conference, helping to organize a statewide conference for library staff in all fields of library work. She does all this with the assistance of only two library assistants. It works because she trains, organizes, and trusts her staff to put in the effort needed, giving them the tools to be successful and being open to listen and implement new ideas. Michelle does this all because she is passionate about helping the people in our community. She genuinely cares about people and wants to help them grow with enrichment and inspiration. Thank you, Michelle, for your service.
Thank you.
I have a bunch of stuff that I wrote. But I just want to highlight when Michelle started a couple of months after I did, and just the antics that we went through, developing websites, social media. We would be on the desk and we would just rack an entire website, and we would have to collect ourselves and go back to normal. I think one of the most important pieces that I want to mention about Michelle, and this is extremely important, is Michelle has written over 23 grants and co-authored four. She has brought in over $230,000 in Library Services and Technology Act grants to our library and to the town. These funds have provided basic connectivity to our community, helping to shrink the digital divide by offering free Wi-Fi hotspots, Chromebooks, Wi-Fi expansion for the library, and even offering virtual reality for seniors to help combat social isolation and help dementia and Alzheimer's sufferers. This was so crucial during COVID, when everything was shut down. Many students and seniors did not have internet connection at home and relied on us for daily access to the internet. I also want to mention that Michelle just submitted another grant, imagine that, to the Arizona Memory Project in the amount of $54,000 to archive, preserve, and digitize the history of Prescott Valley in partnership with the Prescott Valley Historical Society. And I also want to call Michelle my disruptor or troublemaker. So the two of us together are quite a handful for the town. As you know, disruptors and troublemakers are your innovative thinkers. They question the status quo and are problem solvers. We're also troublemakers, but she is a try and true risk taker and creates programs and services that emphasize the relevance and performance of the library to our community. Michelle encompasses our town's values as a high-performing team member and enhances the quality of life for our citizens. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Now, it's time to hear from our council.
Well, Michelle, well done. Thank you so much for being one of the troublemakers who makes our library so beautiful and well-run. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle, for your dedication and contribution to our community. $230,000 is a lot and not to be taken lightly, and we so appreciate all of your hard work. And you're another one of these superstars that we are so proud of in our community. Thank you.
And I know you look so calm and reserved, and to know the wild side to you is amazing. So, thank you. I know the librarians have a wonderful and fun job, but I also know it's a lot of hard work. So, thank you for your patience with everybody who comes through your doors and all the hard work you do, especially grant writing. That's really amazing. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you so much for everything you've done for us. I'm a previous grant writer as well, and my ears went up when that was said about you, and it's not easy, and I really admire you for doing that and how much money you've brought in. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's money that we don't really always have budgeted, and it brings in extra new programs for us to be able to expand our resources and to give our residents more. So, that's really important. And when we're on the radio with Deb over there, when she says what's happening, it's like, oh, my goodness, I cannot believe it. And I know that's not happening all over the United States or even Arizona, the things that we have at our library. And I like to think probably a lot of it has to do with your grant writing. So, I can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart.
I don't like to say that I play favorites, but I think we all know how I feel about the library, and that obviously has so much to do with you. And I just thank you and so appreciate all the work that you've done in the last 10 years. And I actually attended the last library conference as a vendor, and so, and even from a vendor perspective, it was a fantastic event. I love just being able to hang out with all the other vendors and chat and then just get to hear a little bit of what was going on in the conference area. It was a really fantastic event, and I can't wait to go back next year.
It's in October, so we want you to be there.
Okay, I'll be there. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle. Well, very nice to meet you and hear wonderful things about you. As you know, I'm new to the council, and it's wonderful to have people that do way more than what they were hired to do. And when you love what you do, it translates into great results. So, thank you so much for all those 10 years.
Michelle, I just want to thank you for being you. Not many people in this audience, if someone was to ask them, hey, describe yourself, could do it in three words, and all you would have to say is, I'm a librarian. And that would truly sum everything up about what you do and what you bring to work. And I don't know, was that two words, three words? I don't. I am a librarian, okay? How's that? But it just says a lot. You come to work and you do it for the love of reading, for the love of books, and for the love of our citizens, and we appreciate that. So, thank you very, very much. And now's your turn to say a few words.
I just want to say thank you, and really, I have, I work with such amazing staff here at the library. I love the library, and, you know, they make it a special place for us to work. So, thank you all, too.
Next up, call of the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any persons wishing to address the council must register their name with the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Clerk?
We have one person registered. Jane?
Welcome, sir.
Good evening to everybody. I just have a concern that I hope you guys share, that I think it's been an ongoing problem. I came to Prescott Valley in 2013, built a home in Quailwood, and since have moved out, I'm over in the Dells now, but I still travel through Prescott and Prescott Valley, and I'm just disgusted by the amount of trash that's on the side of our roads. I went through to try and see if there was something that maybe was being done right at Granville, and I noticed their washes are a mess, too. And it's, we know who's doing it. It's the builders. So, I'm wondering if there is something in place with you guys, or if there is something that is going on now or in the future, to try and limit this trash or at least clean most of it up. It's styrofoam, it's plastic, it's bottles from, you know, the people that work within the homes and the building trades, and these things blow out onto our streets. Just going down Lakeshore and Glassford and then turning left to get onto the freeway, all I see is trash and bottles. I had a friend out here recently, goes, you guys have beautiful cities, but they're like dumps. She's from Cleveland, Ohio. And I said, yeah, you're right. I probably should get involved and maybe start doing something. I did get ahold, I think his name's Mr. Bowman, he's with your code compliance. He went out, he said, yeah, it's a problem, Jim, I'm going to ask them to remediate. If you have the same success I had with the builders that we're dealing with over in the Dells, which is where I'm at now, unless city council gets involved, or I see, you know, that there's more of an effort from the government side, I think these builders will continue to do what they've been doing, and that's trashing our washes and our highways. So, I'm open for comments, or if you guys have had some successes, or I'd also would like to see a quad-city effort. Maybe we can put together a task force or something. Chino Valley doesn't seem to be as bad, I don't know why, but Prescott Valley and Prescott, we've got trash everywhere, and even going down, as you go down out of our great cities down 69, both sides of the highway are completely littered. So, those are my comments.
There, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. Clerk?
No one else, ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on to council comments. Leva, would you like to lead us off?
No comments.
I have a couple. Okay, reminder, this Saturday, so in two days, kindergarten fair at Yavapai College, 9:00 to noon, Building 19. And it's, even if you don't have a kid going into kindergarten, but you have preschoolers or, you know, just want to come do something fun for the morning, there's going to be a lot of fun activities. And the first half of this week, I just got back last night, I was down in Chandler becoming an Alliance certified trainer to train on the Protective Factors Framework, which is about strengthening families in order to prevent child abuse. The five protective factors are parental resilience, social connections, knowledge of parenting and child development, concrete support in times of need, and social and emotional competence of children. And that's all I'm going to say, but if anybody is interested in hearing more about these protective factors, or maybe hosting a training among your workplace, or just a parents group, or whatever the case may be, please reach out, and I would be happy to do that.
Vice Mayor?
So, I just want to say congratulations to Councilwoman Heppertly, because she does this on her own time, because she is so invested in our kids, and I want to say thank you to that. I'm proud of you. So, we did a ribbon cutting. Councilwoman Dickinson and I did a ribbon cutting for fire safety essentials, and they're on Robert Road, and they offer classes and equipment. They had this blanket that if you have a fire on your stove, you could put this blanket over it, and it goes off and extinguishes it and what have you. So, if you have time, stop by them, they're chamber members, and it was good to have them in town. I also attended the Chamber's First International Women's Day, which was very well-attended and a very nice event. They had all local women speaking on health and motivation, so it was great fun. And thank you, Councilwoman Leva, for sponsoring the venue. That was very sweet of you. And overdose, yesterday we heard about the overdose fatality numbers. So, every year, the overdose committee puts out a report of deaths that we've had in Yavapai County. So, the accidental undetermined overdose deaths for Yavapai County are as follows. So, in 2020, we had 83 deaths. In '21, we had 74 deaths. So, we had a huge celebration because it was the first time in five years that our deaths had gone down. But in 2022, we only had 68 deaths. So, we went from 74 to 68, and a lot of that has to do with our new Drug Enforcement Unit Chief, and also with the Narcan saves that our officers do, and with all the public information that we put out. So, congratulations to us. The other awesome number is in 2020, we had five deaths under the age of 19, and two of them were 14-year-olds. And in 2021, we had zero deaths under the age of 19, and in 2022, we had zero deaths under the age of 19. So, that was good for us. And then Arizona statewide, in 2021, there were 2,015 deaths, and in 2022, there was 1,847 deaths. So, the numbers are all going down, except for people ages 60 and over. So, in 2021, for our county, we had two deaths 60 and over, and in 2022, we had 14 deaths 60 and over. And believe it or not, there are fentanyl-related deaths for people that are 60 and older, and so I think that that is going to be something that we look at in this next coming year with our Illegal Fentanyl Working Group. We've been focusing on children, and we'll continue to focus on children, but I think seniors is something that we'll start looking at as well this year. So, thank you, everybody who helps us talk about illegal drugs, because we are saving lives in Yavapai County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, wait, 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 I forgot something. And I would also like to welcome Cal Willhan to the Board of Adjustments. The selection committee interviewed him, and we were unanimous in appointing him to the expired term left by Doug Van Boning, and we are excited to have Cal join us, filling a term that will end January 31st, 2024, to the Board of Adjustments.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Couple of things. This week, I took advantage of our new app called Our PV, which you can download, and there's a number of things available to you on this webpage. You can pay your water bill, you can keep up with our council meetings, and contact the police department, also the public library. And one of the things, the reason I used it, was because there was a big pothole over on the corner of Paveway and Court Circle and near Walgreens. And it, I just stopped, and I said, this has got to be looked at. And so, I took a few pictures, and they, you push the button called Requests, and it comes up with, it kind of gives you guidance as to how to answer questions. And I presented the pictures and that we had a huge pothole there. And next thing I know, I mean, within a very short period of time, I got a response back that they were looking into it and that it was being addressed, and by the end of the day, it had already been filled. So, I want to congratulate everybody involved with that whole process. It was very productive, and I was very pleased. This week, I had the pleasure of being introduced to a lovely organization called the Northern Arizona Dream Center. And they have, they provide housing with accountability to young people aging out of foster care. And this is a ministry that they allow residents to build a foundation for lifelong success, and the purpose for it is to assist in this situation that we have here in Prescott Valley. It's just for girls over 18, but they're under the umbrella of another organization called Another Journey. And this program is assisting these young girls to become independent. They don't want to keep them for very long, they don't want them to become dependent upon this organization, but they want to teach them life skills. And there's an opportunity to donate to this organization online, and it's under info@nazdreamcenter.org. And the lady that I met that is the director, her name is Macy Seaton, they've only been operating for five years here in Prescott Valley. They got started just before COVID hit, and so, they're not real well-known, but a couple of realtors apparently felt a burden to assist these young ladies, and they have provided this duplex here in Prescott Valley. So, if you get an opportunity, go online and check them out and see what they're all about. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Welcome, everyone. I went to the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, Women's Luncheon, which was really a wonderful place to network and to meet a lot of women who own businesses here in Prescott Valley, which is wonderful to know, including our Councilwoman Leva, who very graciously had us use the warehouse. Also went to a ribbon cutting at the Foothill Pilates that was on Florentine and is now on Glassford Hill. Really big turnout, lots of their clients that love the place, and they fed us all crumble cookies, I think, so that we'd have to go back.
Thank you, ma'am. Apparently, we're going back to Councilwoman Heppertly now.
That just reminded me, can I, can I share Jess's announcement that she made at that event?
Absolutely. I think that would be a good one.
So, speaking of Freedom Core Pilates, Jess, the owner, is Prescott Valley's new representative for Dancing for the Stars this year. So, that is super, super fantastic. She was, when they came to me and said, who do you think, you know, should, because I danced for PV last year, who do you think should do it this year? And she was actually one of my backup dancers. She wore the inflatable giraffe costume. If you guys missed it, you missed a good show. And I said, it has to be her, and she took a little bit of convincing, because she did just move to a bigger space, and her business is doing really well, but now she's super excited. So, when the time comes, get out and vote and support Jess and the Boys and Girls Club.
Vice Mayor, do you have something?
Yeah, I do. Because you've got to go again. So, please mark your calendars for the National Day of Prayer in Prescott Valley for May 4th, 2023. It'll be held at Park Collective, and it'll be, the doors will open at 7:30. Again, it's Thursday, May 4th, 2023. More information to come.
Thank you, ma'am. And Northern Arizona Wranglers, Saturday night, opening night, check them out. So, with that being said, obviously, Mr. Davidson is not here, he's at a personal event, and we have Mr. Judy. There's his report.
Mayor, just one item, we would like to publicly thank both the Arizona Attorney General and the Arizona Secretary of State, who have both visited here over the past two weeks, and publicly thank them for coming to our area, listening to concerns of area residents and officials. So, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, are we removing any items this evening? And if not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve all the items listed under the Consent Agenda as presented by electronic vote.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Hunt? That passes unanimously, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 8A, Town Code Update, Consideration of Possible Action. Mr. Legler? Anything to add?
Mr. Mayor and council, I don't have anything to add unless you have any questions of me as you take this second vote.
Counsel, we have nothing for Mr. Legler. Clerk?
Ordinance Number 2023-917. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference that certain document entitled Amendments to Town Code Chapters 2 and 3 Administration, and declare by Resolution Number 2023-2303 to be a public record. Amending Chapter 2, Mayor and Council, Article 2-2, Mayor, to automatically authorize the vice mayor or enacting mayor to sign documents not signed by the mayor. Amending Chapter 3, Administration, to provide that the positions of town clerk and town engineer be appointed by the town manager rather than the town council. Providing that all other sections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be effective but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
That passes unanimously, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, 8B, zoning map change, CMC 22-010, Mingus West, Unit 10. Ma'am, welcome back. Do you have anything to add from last time?
Staff has no further comments, and we're available for questions.
Counsel, do we have any additional questions that were not answered last time? Clerk?
Ordinance Number 2023-918. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map to change the zoning district classification of an approximately three-acre parcel in Mingus West, Phase 2, to be known as Unit 10, from C1-3PAD, Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services Planned Area Development, to R1L-18PAD, Single Family Residential Limited Planned Area Development, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
That passes unanimously, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 9, 9A, Amendment to Town Code, Chapter 6, Chickens and Rabbits, consideration Consideration of Possible Action. Mr. Ruby, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Back on February 23rd, you heard the results of the citizen survey regarding the keeping of chickens and domestic rabbits. And overwhelmingly, the public was in, in support. At that time, council directed staff to come back with amendments to Chapter 6 and Chapter 13 as well to allow that. It's now proposed that the council consider reading and adopting the Ordinance 2023-919. It amends Chapter 6 Animals in the Town Code to allow up to 10 chickens or domestic rabbits on any residential lot. Also allows the construction of chicken coops and rabbit hutches without a permit, unless they have mechanical, electrical equipment that are attached to it. In addition, it doesn't require any type of building or zoning permit approval. They're allowed by right, according to the amendment. It requires a setback for chicken coops and rabbit hutches of one foot from a property line or an easement line from, away from any adjacent structures. And it also prohibits roosters in our town. Just to note, that any chicken coop or rabbit hutch that is constructed and then eventually does not utilize that use will be considered an accessory building under our code and will have to meet those requirements. In addition, there's a Chapter 13 definition requirement that we update. That will be going to Planning and Zoning Commission in April. We'll come back to council for your final approval. A great big thank you to our legal department for assistance in preparing those. And at this point, staff would recommend approval of Ordinance 2023-919, amending the Town Code, Chapter 6, to allow chickens and domestic rabbits. And just to note that if adopted, these changes will be monitored and reviewed by staff for possible future follow-up changes if necessary. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to, just to mention a comment. I know originally we posted it was going to be about the core part of Prescott Valley, but in fact, since that time, it's been learned that Granville is actually eligible to have chickens. So those living in Granville, despite it being an HOA, is allowed in their HOA to have chickens. So I thought I'd share that.
Great news for the Granville folks, if they're so inclined.
Councilwoman?
I just have a comment. Kind of back before this turned into a real conversation about this change happening, we had a citizen come up and brought a lot of good points about why chickens and bunnies should be allowed in PV. But the one that really hit home for me was to allow PV kids to have a way to participate in 4H. And that really hit home for me because as a PV tween, I did equine 4H, but my horse lived in Dewey. And just the, I just think back on the time I spent with my friends and just, you know, I was the president of my 4H club. So look where we're at now, you know? Like, you just never know what that 4H opportunity brings to kids. And so I'm, I'm excited that we're here at this point and hopefully it's a positive moving forward.
Vice Mayor?
Ernest, we had a question by one of our residents about having classes. And so I broached that subject with the library and they are in fact going to start having classes, beginning with the tween section, and then probably expand that because of this ordinance. So you may want to coordinate with them. Because I know that came up by our friend that used to be the elective official, Donna Phoenix, I think, right?
Princess?
Yes.
Thank you for that information. We will follow up on it.
Councilwoman?
So you mentioned that you're going to be reviewing or going back and looking at the, the, the way that this is handled in the future. And I was curious as to the frequency of that. Is it going to be like maybe once every five years? Or is it more frequent than that? Maybe once every two to five years? Or how, how do you look at that?
Great question, council member. We are kind of a reactive code enforcement and I believe animal control as well. So as we get complaints, we will log those. And if it warrants us going out and doing something, we will address it. And if there's abuses to the system, if you will, then we will come back before you and request changes to help stem those abuses.
I see. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Ruby? Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to re-ordinance Number 2023-919 by title only on two separate occasions and place the same on final passage.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ordinance Number 2023-919. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Chapter 6 Animals of the Town Code to allow the keeping of chickens and domestic rabbits in residential law within the corporate limits of the town, providing that all other chapters, articles and sections of the Town Code not hearing repeal or amend shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 9B, Vacating Portions of Addis Avenue East Toys Ty Kitchen Restaurant. Mr. Robertson, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. We're here to present this request for sale of the right-of-way on Addis. As you can see in the little exhibit here, has a very strange configuration to it. That was due to, back when the Unit 17 was platted in 1970, that whole area with the curve on the blue and the green on the right area was part of right-of-way. 2007, a tract was formed for the blue and the green within that area. And then last year, or no, excuse me, in 2021, Cathma actually sold the little portion on the right in a small strip to the restaurant. And over the last year, I've been working with the owner, and Jim, I know is here, trying to get this put together. We coordinated, he had an appraisal done. We have the appraisal in your packet. He has agreed to the price of the appraisal for the sale of the property. And this is going to improve the ability of him to use this small area for some outdoor seating, better parking and maneuvering, and clean up that strange-looking little right-of-way out there. I, staff does obviously recommend the sale of this right-of-way. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions they may have.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Robertson?
I have one. So Boyd, they're gonna get, they're gonna get, they'll have both greens, which they have both greens now, right?
Yes, they own all of that.
They'll have the beige area too?
Basically, if you see the black heavy line, everything between that line and their property in the green will become theirs.
And then the 10-foot easement isn't shown on here, but we'll figure that out.
Yeah, they're basically along that black line, along Addis, is a 10-foot public utility easement for the existing utilities that are within that portion of right-of-way, so.
Awesome. Are they here?
Yes.
Congratulations, that's...
You don't work at Toys, though, right? You, you don't work, do you own the property? Okay. Gotcha.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Just want to say you guys have amazing pad thai. The best in town is at this little place. Love there. Any other questions for Mr. Robertson? Councilwoman?
Good evening, Boyd. So that little area there has become a very active and busy intersection. And I think this is to what you're contributing here. And I was just curious about the ingress and egress. Could you kind of point out how people are going to get into the restaurant? And I noticed that the, the new parking is going to be off further to the north. Is that correct?
No, actually, the little, the strange little piece with the curve in it that comes down, that's basically where the access to the property will continue. And, but they'll be able to open all of that up to parking all the way across their property and move their dumpster over towards the eastern side of things. And this will actually help remove the current issue of vehicles having to back out onto Addis to exit the restaurants.
All right. Thank you.
Nothing further? Can I have a motion?
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2023-2308 stating abandoning 3,007 square foot area of Addis Avenue East to the adjacent property owner, subject to reservation for payment of $9,050 by electronic vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 9C, Town Code Amendments, Roadway, Consideration of Possible Action. Mr. Legler, what do you got?
Mayor and Council, the council several years ago took an action to only require sidewalks on one side of residential streets in new developments. And the reason for it was, the thought was that it would help make it look more rural and that it would reduce the cost to those who bought the homes, since those costs are always passed on to homeowners. Since then, there has been some thought that the downside was that it stopped people from crossing the street and being able to use that sidewalk. In other words, it, it reduced their ability to be connected. And so since many people wouldn't cross a street to use a sidewalk, they then didn't have a sidewalk to use. And so the thought is that despite the policy reasons of the past, that connectivity should take precedence and that we should go back to the concept of having sidewalks on both sides of the street. And so the proposal is to amend the code to require sidewalks now again on both sides of the street. And at the same time, we're taking an opportunity to give the council some additional authority to restrict trucks on roadways, where we've discovered that trucks are causing a problem on that particular residential street usually, although it could be any, any street in the community. And so you would be able to do that by resolution. This ordinance will allow that to happen.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Legler? Councilwoman Heffley?
So obviously for brand-new developments, the, the new, the sidewalk code would apply to, to that. But what about new phases of existing developments? Like, say, the next phase of Jasper that comes up for final development?
That's a good question. If it's already been approved, the current code would apply. But in the future, the new code would apply.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything, oh, anything else? Councilwoman Leva?
Effective when?
It'll be effective as soon as the ordinance is effective. So two readings and then 30 days.
Councilwoman?
So the situation with the trucks, that will be strictly residential areas that is involved with monitoring the trucks? Or it, it doesn't include industrial, is that correct?
Actually, it could theoretically. This would apply to any right-of-way in the town. But generally, these are residential streets where we have engineering that indicates that trucks are causing a particular problem.
With nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2023-2308, declaring the document Amendments to Town Code Chapters 10 and 14, Sidewalk Improvements and Restricted Highway Usage to be a pu, a public record by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 9D, Schneid...
We gotta do another motion.
Um, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead and read the first reading, please. I'm sorry. We just made the motion.
We need a motion to read the ordinance.
For B also?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to read the ordinance Number 2023-920, adopting by reference the document entitled Amendments to Town Code or Chapters 10 and 14.
It's actually a resolution. And remember, in the past, the clerk's office doesn't like to spend a lot of money having to draft or publish large ordinances. And so in some cases, in the first one, we didn't have to because it was a short ordinance. This is a longer ordinance. So we have the first vote is to read the resolution, declaring it to be a public record. Then we have the, the motion on reading the ordinance that adopts it by reference.
Okay, so here it says it's an ordinance. I should say resolution instead.
Resolution 2022, or 2023 dash, what is it?
Even the first motion was right. The second motion is just to read the ord...
Okay. Motion to read ordinance Number 2023-920, adopting by reference the document entitled Amendments to Town Code Chapters 10 and 11, Sidewalk Improvements and Restricted Highway Usage by title only on two separate occasions and place the same on final passage by electronic vote.
There was, you said Chapters 10 and 11, and it's Chapters 10 and 14.
Okay.
Clerk?
Second it.
Please call the mo, please, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ordinance Number 2023-920. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference that certain document, Amendments to Town Code Chapters 10 and 14, Sidewalk Improvements and Restricted Highway Usage, declared by Resolution Number 2023-2308 to be a public record. Amending Chapter 10, Traffic, to permit restrictions on usage of designated highways by trucks and commercial vehicles. And Chapter 14, Subdivisions, to require sidewalk improvements on both sides of residential streets, providing that all other chapters, articles and sections of the Town Code not hearing repeal or amend it shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now you're up. 90, Snyder Electric, Energy Audit Agreement. Welcome, Mr. Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you remember, we were here at first part of the month at the work section and went through a presentation of what was going on with this project. I have Brandon with me again today from Snyder Electric. And I guess the overview of what we're looking at is a contract for work on the town buildings. We start with HVAC systems here at, at the Civic Center as well as at the Vian Center. We are also repairing and upgrading 52 other units throughout the town buildings to bring them up to current levels, upgraded levels, I guess. We're also looking at a building automation system that will tie together eight of the town's buildings and allow us remote control and monitoring of those HVAC units, the HVAC units and all. Upgrading the electrical system, the, the main cabinet of the electrical system at the town center. And upgrading plumbing fixtures. The nice thing about that one, that's at all of the parks and buildings for the town, we will be saving over a million gallons of water a year. That's the equivalent of 50 swimming pools each year. So that's something that we're working in the right direction on. We also have a few additional services. We're looking at a capital asset planner so that everybody can monitor what's going on with all the equipment and be on top of everything that needs to be done. And we are also... And we also have a new phone system that's in the process of being implemented as well. So if you have any more questions concerning this, would be happy to answer.
Anything you want to add, sir?
Anything you've got, but nothing I want to add.
I feel like we exhausted all questions and comments the last time you were here. Counsel, do we have anything additional for Mr. Osborne? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a contract with Schneider Electric Buildings Americas, Inc., in the total amount of $6,700... Correction, $6,788,058. Parenthesis, $2,841,712, being the amount attributable to the Event Center HVAC units and installation. And the related budget transfer of $663,080 from the town contingency fund by electronic vote.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. On to Item 10.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone, you are more than welcome to stick around after because we have this super exciting CFD meeting. And we're going to cover a lot of great stuff. So knock your socks out. But if not, have a great night. Thanks for coming.